At this hearing, any interested person may submit data, views, or comments orally or in writing. Written testimony will be considered the same as any oral testimony presented today. You may submit written comments in a labeled box provided in the adjoining room. Outside of this hearing process, written comments may also be submitted, go later than 5:00 PM on October 30th, to Chuck Barone at the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, 2273 Booty Hill Court, Bozeman, Montana, 59715. Or you can email it to limestonewest@mt.org. All of this contact information is provided on the Project Resources Information Sheet in the adjacent room. So if you want to submit email or written comments, you can get that information next door. If you wish to make oral comments, I'm going to ask that you approach the podium, state your name for the record, whom you represent if it's someone other than yourself, and make your comment into the microphone provided. Out of respect for the number of people here, testimony will be limited to three minutes per person. I will provide notice to each person when 30 seconds remain. In actuality, we have a sign here, and we'll hold up the sign when 30 seconds remain. At the end of three minutes, I will announce that your time is up. And any additional comments you may have will need to be submitted in writing. After testifying, which the podium is here, please go to your right and sign the witness register located on the table adjacent to the podium. And then you can walk back along that far wall, there should be room to walk back. The bathrooms are out the doorway and across the hall. The exits are marked, there's exits in the back, there's one here and in the back of the other room. And now I'll read a little bit of background on the Limestone West timber sale right at the beginning. Throughout summer 2016, DNRC specialists gathered data in the Limestone West project area. DNRC sent out two scoping notices to interested parties. The first notice was sent on March 1st, 2016, and again on June 9th, 2016, with refined project proposals. Since March 1st, DNRC received approximately 300 comments from interested individuals. The ID team used issue statements and other comments to develop a selectable range of project alternatives and to design the effects analysis for the draft EIS, as well as potential mitigation measures, in accordance with the Montana Environmental Policy Act. The range of selectable alternatives in the draft EIS are: 1. The No Action Alternative. A No Action Alternative is considered and analyzed, under the No Action Alternative, no timber harvesting would occur in the project area at this time, and no conservation license would be issued. Alternative Action A. The Action Alternative proposes harvest units using both conventional ground-based equipment on 415 acres, as well as cable harvest systems on 185 acres, totaling 600 acres of harvest. This alternative would require the most road infrastructure, treat more acres, and potentially be the most visible alternative from recreational corridors and residential areas. Action Alternative B. This Action Alternative proposes harvest units using only conventional, ground-based equipment on 375 acres and defers harvest in the areas identified as highly valuable to the public, notably adjacent to the Triple Tree Trail. This alternative would require less road infrastructure, treat fewer acres, result in fewer viewshed impacts to surrounding residents and recreation users, and would retain more security cover for wildlife in comparison to Alternative A. Number 4, Action Alternative C. Under Montana Code of Date 775208, the department may accept applications for a conservation license in lieu of timber sale. DNRC received an application for a conservation license in lieu of timber sale in the fall of 2016. This license is a temporary deferral of timber harvest over a specified geographic area. During the MEPA process, the department sets the term length of the license, as well as other provisions contained within it, as required under code. Through this application process, conservation license applicants have reserved the right to bid against timber sale purchasers during the bidding phase of this timber sale project. As such, we have analyzed this Action Alternative for the issuance of a conservation license in lieu of timber sale, and the impact associated with deferral of forest management for a term of 10 years. To be clear, this alternative would only be implemented if a timber sale alternative is selected and the conservation license applicant is the highest bidder. The Department of Natural Resources and Conservation keeps a list of interested people who wish to receive ongoing information about the Limestone West project sale. If you would like your name added to this list, please provide your contact information on the signing sheet provided in the adjoining room. So at this time, I will open the hearing. The way I'm going to do this is we're going to go from that side of the room to that side, from the front row back. And if you pass, you may certainly have an opportunity to testify later, but we're going to start in the front, beginning on my left. And whosoever, if this gentleman wants to go first, if it wants to be the goodie big, that's great. I guess I would have you approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and we will start the time. And then when you're done, I'll remind you again to go and sign on the signup sheet from testimony after you testify. And the reason for that is, we make a recording, and we have a number of traps, and it's much easier to correlate. When you say your name, it's difficult to spell it, etc. It's much easier if we go in order, testifying and signing up, so that I can put a name to the trap. So at this time, I will open the hearing. Perfect, however you'd like to.
I guess that'll do. I'm Norman Bishop. I graduated in botany and zoology from the University of Denver, then went to Colorado State University in forestry and wildlife management. I retired to Bozeman in 1997 after 36 years as a National Park Ranger. I've hyped the Limestone West area repeatedly, and consider it too valuable for the ecosystem services it provides and its habitat and the dispersal corridor for wildlife to be sacrificed for a handful of dollars. Briefly on the Limestone West proposal, I favor either the No Action Alternative or Alternative C, with the suggestion that deferral of forest management be modified to read in perpetuity rather than for 10 years. Here are some of my reasons for choosing those alternatives. Logging not only destroys the integrity of an ecosystem that took millennia to develop, and that is irreplaceable in many lifetimes, it also lowers property values. Craighead Institute scientists tell us that management of our wild areas should emphasize protecting forest resources, particularly wildlife and habitat, and essential services that are provided by intact ecosystems. This is critically important in the face of climate change. Once an ecosystem is fragmented, its resilience to climate change and factors such as insects, pathogens, and invasive species is reduced. The ecosystem of Limestone West has more value today by serving the public in other ways rather than fulfilling a purpose conceived 130 years ago. In 1889, none but European scientists had any inkling of climate change. This year, the measured level of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere reached an all-time high of 411 parts per million. The safe level for humans is about 350 parts per million. The best technology available for removing carbon from the atmosphere is natural, biodiverse forests. Numerous studies document just how much more efficient trees are at sucking carbon out of the atmosphere after their hundredth birthday. At that point, the tree's carbon sequesturing power moves into high-speed mode, and it begins to store exponentially more carbon in its leaves, trunks, and roots as it continues to grow. Today, less than 5% of America's original intact old forests remain. Industrial logging releases vast amounts of carbon that otherwise would be stored in those forests.
Mr. Bishop, I'm going to ask you to bring your comments next door and submit them in writing, if you would.
15 seconds?
And I'm going to, out of respect for all the people that are here gathered, I'm going to adhere quite strongly to the timeline, and I'd ask you to sign the... I am going to... You could see us better, yeah, I was going to say, if you want to face this way, that would be better, so you can tell you what the 30 seconds is.
Oh, is that a second?
However you'd like, if you want it to be. I don't want people to trip over the court, that's the big thing.
This is dangerous. Good evening, my name is Lori Lieberman, I'm a Bozeman resident. First, thanks to the DNRC for scheduling this meeting to take public comment regarding the Limestone West logging project. It affects all of us in this community. Just as all the DNRC are public servants, all Montanans are public servants as it comes down to our environment. The Save Our Gallatin Front, or SOGF, is a community-based organization that is solely interested in preserving the unique, pristine wildlife habitat, viewshed, and watershed that exists today in Limestone West, and to prevent its destruction for generations for less than $200,000. It's important to note that we are not opposed to logging, as we recognize the importance of this industry for jobs in Montana and for the general economy. We're simply opposed to this particular project. In any analysis of the costs and benefits of public projects, we should be clear about who are the financial beneficiaries and what are the inherent risks. The original Montana constitution established guidelines for logging targets to specifically benefit our educational system. However, in this project, the lion's share of the proceeds benefits the Montana Building Fund, with a small percentage going to the Butte School of Mines. Gallatin Valley Education, specifically K-12 and MSU, received zero. As to the risks, there are many which will be addressed in more detail tonight. But first, the DNRC Environmental Impact Statement, EIS, readily acknowledges the materially negative impact from logging and the proposed road on wildlife displacement. Our moose, elk, deer, bear, turkeys, fox, cats, and numerous other species make this place unique, and therefore our wildlife species are directly threatened. There is debate and uncertainty on the impact to our watershed from soil erosion, sildage, and runoff variables. SOGF has submitted documents to the DNRC prepared by soils analysts and water hydrologists, yet we do not believe that these expert analyses have been adequately addressed in EIS. Our viewshed represents one of the few remaining fully unlogged and continuous stretches of forest, visible from Bozeman and miles around. Clearcut, as being proposed, will leave a lasting scar for decades to come, and the Mount Ellis and Bear Canyon Forest Management Projects from the recent past provide little comfort. Others tonight will discuss the details of the conservation license, so I won't jump into that, and I see my time's running out. But the bottom line is this. Is it fair for the citizens of Gallatin County to sacrifice our viewshed for 75 years to displace our beloved wildlife, to endanger our watershed? For what? A mere $130,000 to $190,000, which will benefit the state's building fund, yet provide zero benefit to local Gallatin education?
Thank you very much, Mr. Bishop.
I urge all Gallatin residents to strongly oppose this project and make your voices heard.
My name is Jeff Yates, and I'm a Bozeman resident. The Limestone Creek and No Name Creek drainages are prized by the Bozeman community today precisely because they are wild, they're roadless, and have very little human traffic. The areas to the east have been logged, the areas to the west are full of trails, roads, and people. This small slice of the Gallatin Front is all that is left that is pristine and wild, providing a wonderful habitat for wildlife, and it should be preserved. Make no mistake, logging this area, 70% of which would be clearcut, and building up to nine miles of new roads will change the character of this special area forever, primarily because the area will experience a great increase in human traffic. The draft EIS seeks to dismiss the wildlife dislocations that will occur in the immediate Limestone West project area, which is what we care about, by analyzing everything through the lens of a much larger 33,400-acre cumulative effects analysis area. But, referring to the impact on the Limestone West project itself, page 41 of the EIS concludes that there will be, quote, "moderate to high levels of local wildlife displacement potential into the future due to the increase in new permanent restricted roads and cover removal," end quote. So let's take the moose, one of the species the EIS analyzes. The EIS notes that moose are a species of interest in Montana because of their dwindling numbers. Limestone West is one of the areas where moose is still abundant, but the logging and road building alternatives proposed by the DNRC could destroy the supported moose habitat. Page 192 of the EIS concludes that, quote, "displacement of moose could occur for several decades depending on how much recreational use the area receives and the type of recreation," end quote. The EIS predicts similar displacements of other species such as marten elk, wolverine, and bears in the Limestone West project area. So, I urge the DNRC decision makers and the land board to recognize that the Limestone West area provides an exceptional wildlife habitat that should be preserved for our future generations. The second-best alternative could be to provide a conservation license that has a reasonable term, not the 10-year term currently provided in the draft EIS, which is a total non-starter. If logging is to proceed despite the opposition of a great many Gallatin County citizens, Alternative B is to be much preferred over Alternative A. As the draft EIS itself says on page 16, this is because, quote, "Alternative B would require less road infrastructure, treat less acres, would limit viewshed impacts to surrounding residents and recreational users, and would retain more security cover for wildlife in comparison to Alternative A."
Thank you very much, Mr. Yates. I would remind you that...
Thank you.
There's no formal way that written comments need to be submitted, except to put them in the box. If you have your notes and you would like to submit those as written comments, that's perfectly acceptable, put your name on them, and I'd encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
You got it, thank you. I would ask you to hold your applause in the name of efficiency.
I'm Ron Matlich, and I'm a member of Save Our Gallatin Front. There are four different options. SOGF supports No Action. It should be mentioned that in the early 1980s, the DNRC did an EIS draft, and it was their conclusion to do No Action in the Limestone West area. They relied on the best scientists in Montana and in our region to form that opinion. And the truth is, and the fact is, that that land hasn't changed much in the last 35 years. Why did they say No Action? The area is severe for logging due to the steepness of the slopes and instability of the soils. SOGF has consulted with Dr. Henry Shovick, a leading soil scientist, and in December this past year, he submitted a paper to the DNRC using a recent scientific paper to determine that building roads and logging in Limestone would be risky. 85% of where the primary road goes is in severe terrain with steep slopes. The final EIS must consider Dr. Shovick's submission to ignore his findings which suggest that the DNRC favors harvesting trees at the expense of wildlife clean water and stable mountain hillsides in Limestone West. The second-best option is the conservation license. We find the 10-year term is unreasonable. The relevant question to ask is, what would a prudent person pay to rent the land? Under the current 10-year term, the citizens would pay for the timber, but in 10 years, the DNRC can reap the harvest. In a sense, it's double-dipping, the DNRC would get a double payment, they would be paid twice. SOGF has consulted with Dr. David Jackson, forest economist, professor emeritus at the University of Montana. He will be submitting to the DNRC in the next few weeks comments, and I ask the DNRC to carefully consider his comments. The third option is Alternative B, and it's better than Alternative A because it doesn't clearcut up to the Triple Tree Trail, and the roads don't reach Triple Tree Trail. The worst option is Alternative A. This would clearcut right up to the Triple Tree Trail. It's unacceptable. It would be the most disruptive option that impacts wildlife, and there would be easy access from Triple Tree Trail to the roads.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matlich.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, perfect. I would encourage you to put your written comments, submit them next door.
Hi, my name's Niall Swicka. I've read the entire draft EIS. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Montana, and I'm a member of Save Our Gallatin Front.
Mr. Swicka, I would ask you to speak a little bit more slowly, because I'm having trouble hearing you already.
Oh, darn it, how am I getting my three minutes in, is that coming? All right, start over.
Sure, start over.
Well, first of all, on behalf of Save Our Gallatin Front, I would like to request that all the materials and the records that are put together be provided for our review before the final draft EIS is released. I have specific questions, and I'll get right to them. The draft EIS refers throughout the document to a set of best management practices, BMPs. I have been on the website, read the BMP document, which was updated in 2015. These BMPs do not look at all like the Forest Services, which are much more regimented. The document refers to recommended practices, not specific construction practices for this site or for what will be encountered. The document very clearly states that you must refer to experts when encountering unusual conditions that may affect designs, including soils and slide potential in other areas where springs may encourage slides. I believe that you intend to build low-volume roads, as per the BMP document. I would like to request that we be provided with information with regards to which experts have you consulted with, and what were their recommendations. Second, when we start any construction project within the state of Montana that disturbs more than one acre, we are required to develop a detailed stormwater erosion plan, and then implement that plan before construction. Are you required to develop such a plan? Has that plan been developed and approved? And do you intend to abide by the process, which includes weekly inspections, especially after rain events? Next, there is a reference to a weed control plan. However, I cannot find the plan, and I cannot find drafts of the plan. The draft also says that the BMPs, which will be used for weed management planning, are referenced, but I can't find them. This area is way up high, and is therefore subject to down drafts. When those down drafts come, we'll pick up the weed seeds and deposit them throughout the valley. There will be road slopes that require permanent management, and there will be areas which will be reclaimed, which require special action. Each area will require significant cost for weed management. Who will review and approve the weed control plan? Has the cost of weed control been factored into the net dollar amount that is going to the trustee? And what is the budget used for weed control? And lastly, can you please provide more details with regard to road closure? In the BMP manual, it refers to many different stacks of road closures, and one of those is simply physical barriers, and I would just like to know if that's what's happening. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Swicka. I'm going to move this podium, I'm concerned about somebody tripping on here. I'll put it here, and hopefully that'll enable people to speak into the microphone, pick it up. Work a little better.
My name is Tim Tuzna. I'm a Bozeman resident and a member of the Save Our Gallatin Front organization. According to your DEIS, Alternative A and B are estimated to generate a total of $462,438 and $318,240 for the state revenues respectively. In addition, you estimate that Alternatives A and B would yield a benefit of $189,600 or $130,470 for the trust beneficiaries, which is roughly about 41% of the state revenues. The difference between these two amounts, $272,838 for Alternative A and $187,762 for Alternative B, are your DEIS estimated management expense using the DNRC's average revenue cost rotation from your annual accounting records, or roughly 60% of the state income. With this said, your calculations in the DIS reflect that Alternative C, the conservation license, would yield approximately the same amount of dollars to the trust beneficiaries, $189,600 for Alternative A, and $130,478 for Alternative B. And yet, Alternative C would not require time for the DNRC to manage a logging project, and consequently, the management expenses attendant to that. My comment or question is, why does the DEIS not show that Alternative C would yield the trust beneficiaries the full amount of the state revenue, which is $462,438 for Alternative A, and $318,240 for Alternative C? In other words, there's more dollars would flow through to the beneficiaries under Alternative C than what's being recognized in the DIS. So I ask that in the final EIS, reflect the true financial impact of the conservation license to the trust beneficiaries. And second, if the project proceeds to taking bid for a specific project scope, I ask that the bids be evaluated on the net yield to the land trust beneficiaries, and not based on the revenue to the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tuzna. And we got a little bit sideways, I'm going to hold off the gentleman in the second row, and start here, out of deference to Mr. Bishop, we started in the middle, and you got all messed up. Anyone, yes, anyone else in the front row? Please. And then we'll begin with the gentleman in the 10, after everyone else is.
My name is Nancy Schultz, I'm with Gallatin Wildlife Association. I have concerns about the effects of this project on wildlife. The removal of trees and the road system in this project will adversely affect wildlife habitat, essential wildlife corridors for elk, mule, whitetail deer, black bear, resley, moose, birds, and other species. I'm concerned that wildlife will lose an incredibly important area. It's one of the last, well, it is the last piece of habitat that is relatively undisturbed in this section of the Gallatin Valley. And we all know how fast the Gallatin Valley is growing, and that makes this even more important. The project area is approximately 2.3 miles from a wildlife crossing site over US 90 that Gallatin Wildlife has been working to get a safe wildlife passage over. And it is called the Gallatin Bridger Big Belt Wildlife Corridor, and it is recognized by the state, and is also recognized by the Forest Service as potentially important for maintaining habitat connectivity for Canada lynx, or one species. However, DNRC says that the effects to wildlife in this important area, most carnivores and ungulates would be displaced to some degree for the duration of the activities, two to three years, due to motorized disturbance and increased human activities. Trees would be expected to regenerate in two to four decades, and then they would begin to provide cover and greater security. Displacement occur, individuals displaced would most likely travel back to other forested lands. Displacement might cause elk, bears, moose to leave the preferred feeding areas in spring and winter, potentially affecting some individual animals. And this is what their draft EIS says. Well, I asked a noted wildlife biologist, I said, "What would happen if they are displaced?" He said, "All the habitat is taken. If they lose this habitat, they will just wander off and die. There is no more habitat available." Wildlife needs this habitat, and it's so important for wildlife, should not be logged, and wildlife needs a long-term conservation easement.
Thank you very much, and please remember to sign off.
My name's Glenn Monahan from Bozeman, I'm a member of Gallatin Wildlife Association. As I've engaged with DNRC personnel over the last couple of years about this project, the mantra that I keep hearing repeatedly is that we have to log this area. It's our DNRC's mandate to raise money. Well, I challenge DNRC to emerge from the dark ages and acknowledge that state trust lands have many values. In the case of Limestone West, we are looking at an identified wildlife migration corridor which likely has significant value that exceeds the value... which likely has significant value that exceeds the value of timber. Unfortunately, DNRC does not appear to have a method to assess the other values that Limestone West has to Montana's economy. As we all know, Montana's outdoor economy, which includes hunting and wildlife watching, is presently contributing by orders of magnitude, much more than our historic extractive industries like logging. Unfortunately, DNRC seems to have no means to place value on the wildlife attributes of the Limestone West area, or any of its lands for that matter. We are living in a place, the Greater Yellowstone Ecosystem, where all of the native species that were here when Lewis and Clark showed up were still present. The GY, Greater Yellowstone Ecosystem is unparalleled in the lower 48. It's under increasing pressure from human encroachment and we are just beginning to recognize the importance of wildlife migration corridors, of which Limestone West is a crucial component. It links the Gallatin Range with the Bridger bank tails and in doing so, it provides a genetic link for species in the Greater Yellowstone Ecosystem to interchange genetic material with the same wildlife in the Bog Marshall Glacier Complex, the Northern Continental Divide Ecosystem. I favor the no-action alternative as a means of preserving Montana's treasured wildlife and the migration corridor that Limestone West has a component of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Monahan would you sign? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Swanson. I work at Montana State University and I'm a member of Save Our Gallatin Front. I was fortunate enough to start the day in Limestone West. I managed to get up near the top without roads and the sun came up. The aspens are turning yellow, the giant dung furs holding their ponderous branches, and the elk were bugling. It was a beautiful morning to be out in a light rain. And I go out to that area many times a year. It's a gorgeous area and it's truly unique. There's nothing to the east, the area around Mount Ellis. It's faux forests and rotted former work of the DNRC. And to the west is the newly developed Triple Tree area, which now is hosting hundreds of runners and mountain bikers a day and all the noise and fun that everyone's having here in this valley. So wedge between those two is a very special place, it means a lot to me. And I've written letters and read the EIS. I read the previous EIS that I helped to produce the video that some of you have seen on the initiative here. So what I'd like to say today is that it seems to me that for such a small amount of money that's going to be raised for state schools, that really, I was, I used to be on the school board and it takes so much more than a couple hundred thousand dollars to build and run a school. It's really paltry and I think it feels like DNRC is sticking to this old model where they have to raise money through logging and there's so many other ways to do this that's really gonna meet the needs of this community, because logging is not gonna meet the needs of this community and we could wreck the last best place there is. I'm with Mr. Yates here, who thinks that maybe Option C in perpetuity is the best answer of all. Thank you.
To the gentleman, did you want to testify?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Swanson, if you would sign it, please as well. And go ahead and just tell us your name and then move the mic wherever you need to move it.
My name is Joe Gutkowski and we came over here from Missoula in '64. So I've been watching this Gallatin Valley front for many years. Elk security cover, deer and elk caving, winter ranging. It's highly vulnerable, this whole front. And the DNRC ruined the western end that they did in the last four or five years. That was the best moose habitat in Montana. It's gone. It's dried up. They clear cut it. They had seed trees left. They blew down the first winter. They don't know what they're doing. Wake up that Missoula team over there. That operates for DNRC and Forestry. They're way off the mark. I walked through the stands that they want, that they want to log right now. It's great cover for wildlife. Our wildlife biologists tell me they've even seen wilbreen pass through there. There's marten in there. It's a, it's a remnant of a large fire that happened a long time ago. And what's left in the way of timber that I could see is a couple of big old dung fur pumpkins that have bark to resist fire. And there they stand, 300 feet away from each other. That's all there is to log in there and they're gonna take it. The rest of it, they're gonna mash down with dozers like they did over west. We can't allow it. We can't allow it. Now, I'm not talking in favor of Triple Tree or Eagle Rock Reserve. They're there. We gotta live with them. I tried to get Fish Wildlife and Parks to buy all that land. First, Eagle Rock Reserve, first, second, Triple Tree. Fish Wildlife and Parks didn't have the money. Neither did the Forest Service. So we have state 11 sections in there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gutowski.
One more state.
I would ask you to put your comments in writing out of respect for the other people here.
Thank you.
All right, the gentleman in the second row, I believe you're up. Yeah, this time we'll go all the way across.
It's gonna be a tough act to follow. You know, I'm 67 years old. I don't feel so old today looking around.
Say your name, say your name if you would.
Name is Ron Ramstiel. I worked for MSU, worked for him for 46 years now.
On the microphone.
Okay, on the microphone, sorry. My name is Ron Ramstiel. I worked for MSU. For 46 years now I've worked for him. I'm a native Montanan, grew up in the mountains, own some timberland, which was, of course, inherited. Went back to that timberland a few years ago, about 20 years ago now, I guess. Beautiful. Man, it was gorgeous. Open, just like you see in the books. One funny thing about that though, there wasn't a deer track, there wasn't a chickeny. There wasn't nothing in there but trees. Now, we harvested those trees, some of them, not all, but some of them. Now the brush is back. Now the birds are back. Now the deer are back. Now the wolves are back. We got animals in there. Now, I'm gonna try to keep it, we only got three minutes, so I'm gonna hit high points. But you've got two things you can do with timber, the way I look at it. You can enjoy it in the short term. It's beautiful. Gosh, it is. And you can let it burn. Or you can harvest those trees and do some good with them. And maybe when that forest burns, and it will burn, it won't burn so hot. And if it doesn't burn so hot, the soil won't be hydrophobic when the rains come. And if those soils are hydrophobic because the fire was too hot, you lose your topsoil. It goes right down the slope. It's gone. So I think you need to look at the long, long term and let the foresters do their work. And if that forest is mature and some of those trees need to come out, let them do their job to keep that forest healthy in the long term. I'm not talking 10, 20 years. I'm talking a lot longer than that. The last thing we need is a roaring fire to go across these mountains and take care of wildlife, if we get our water from. We do not need to have a hot fire go through there. Now, people talked about weeds. I tell you folks, I kill a lot of weeds. It's what I do and weeds are in the eye of the beholder and weeds hold soil.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramstiel. If you would sign that sheet, please. And I would encourage people to move the mic whenever it's comfortable.
Okay. My name is Dan Gannon and I live just north of this project and I have helped clear the Triple Tree Trail for the past 27 years, before it was even called the Triple Tree Trail. After considering both sides of this issue, I would propose a compromise plan. I would propose Option B with two significant amendments. That all, Amendment Number One, that all newly built logging roads be reclaimed upon the project completion to eliminate future traffic. The purpose is to eliminate the multi-decade displacement of wildlife as anticipated if the public traffics these logging roads. Amendment Number Two, that the contract include the building of the Upper Loop Walking Trail that goes to the Triple Trees. This trail shall be called the Junior Meyer Trail. The benefits of this trail are multiple. The general public perceives no tangible benefits to Alternative A and B, which we've already heard. However, additional hiking trails would be perceived as a significant tangible benefit to the public. This hiking trail does not intrude into the wildlife corridor to the east. Additionally, this additional loop of hiking will disperse hiking traffic, so everyone will have greater experience. Naming it for Junior Meyer is in deference to a historical Bozeman figure who is pertinent to the site of this project and its trails. The summit of this trail at the Triple Trees provides unique and outstanding vistas to our Gallatin Valley. The summit is where the Triple Tree Trails are, excuse me, the Triple Trees are in a perfect triangle now. It's a logical endpoint to the main to mountain hiking trail system. This Upper Loop Trail already exists, but it is in disrepair and it would require significant rerouting on steep sections. But I think this would be a benefit to all parties. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Good evening. I'll move the mic this way so I can speak into it. For the record, my name is Julia Altemus. It's A-L-T-E-M-U-S. I'm here on behalf of the Montana Wood Products Association. And we're gonna, we will provide extensive comments before the deadline in October. I just want to hit on a couple of things that have not been mentioned. We certainly have and understand the passion around this project and the diversity of opinion. But I also want to remind folks that this area is already subject to some beetle infestation, some spruce butt worm outbreaks as well. So we are concerned, in addition to providing certainly jobs and providing some forest health, that we are concerned that if a fire does come through here, I mean, the cost of the fire is gonna be very extensive and will be, will cost the state a lot of money. We lost 1.3 million acres to fire last year. Costs $440 million between the state and the federal, you know, 70 million to the state coffers. So we're concerned about that. We're concerned about public safety, the loss of private property, the loss of life, and certainly about the wildlife, which will return. There are way more emissions, carbon emissions that will go up in the air during a fire than there is during logging. And I don't believe there is clear cutting, I believe a select harvest and a line logging. So that's different than clear cutting. But if you have a fire, it's standard replacing and it is clear cutting. So thank you for the opportunity to comment and we'll provide written comments later. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Angelo Ramirez with IFG, St. Regis. I just want to do a quote from Governor Bullock in the Evergreen Magazine. "We, Montana, are concerned about the declining health of our forests. It is threatening our communities, natural resource forces, and a way of life in Montana. And the purpose and need, sizable areas of the project area have experienced serious infestations of mountain pine beetle and the Douglas firsthands are confronted with health and vigor issues due to the overstocking. For this reason, we support Alternative A. This alternative maximizes the largest percentage, manages the largest percentage of the land. This alternative will restore the most acres in comparison. Alternative A will produce the most revenue for our schools. Alternative A will produce, oh, will also increase the health and vigor across more acreage and provide a renewable resource to our timber industry and have the most positive impact on the surrounding smaller timber dependent communities like Deer Lodge in Livingston. We are opposed to Alternative One and Alternative C. This alternative does nothing to improve the forest health and in fact, it accelerates the decline of the forest. Alternative C kicks the can down the road, which has never been Montana way. One more quote from our governor. "As our forests decline, so do the wildlife and the fish that depends on those forests for healthy habitat and clean abundant water." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Phil, did you raise the mic up?
Good evening. My name is Brian Larrango, fifth generation Montanan. You're looking at my son Carter and he's also a third generation Montanan. I come from a logging family and I'm hoping that we can pass that on. I currently work for the Montana Logging Association and advocate for the 500-plus members of the state of Montana that we manage our forests. You're looking right here at a 10-year-old. I would argue that he is the biggest endangered species in the state of Montana. I can tell you, I've hunted, fished in the ry watershed property, West Anaconda. I'll give anyone my phone number. I'm happy to take them hunting, fishing on that watershed property on any day, all day. I've seen wildlife, bear, elk, deer, moose, all on that watershed. Yes, is there gonna be some impacts from timber harvest? Absolutely, there's gonna be. But it's a temporary, I like the gentleman over here that talked about long-term. This is what I'm looking for. I'm looking for my grandson, my great-grandson. Are we gonna have infrastructure and industry? I worked with the DNRC for some time as fire. I fought fire in all the southwestern states in my, in my early twenties. Not one of them have a sawmill left. And I understand your concerns about wildlife and watershed and quality. If you look at the BMP SMZ law that the industry in Montana in the eighties put in, we are successful. The three Cs, clean, connective, cold. We audit those, these timber sites every other year. It's reported to legislature. Does anybody know what the, how we're doing on that? Almost 100% compliance, 98% started in the seventies. So we're doing the work correctly. And I would argue those that, that don't want to see this project where as we consumers are gonna get our natural resources in the future. We all consume roughly a 100-foot tall tree, 18 inches diameter a year. Every one of us in this room does that. We're all consumers. This is three and a half times more of the raw material than the 1970s. A 2,500-square-foot home takes 15,000 board feet of timber. I can tell you, I drove through your folks' subdivision. I don't think there's a 2,500-square-foot home there. So again, my name is Brian Larrango. You can get on our website, www.logging.org, hook me up. I'm happy to take anyone to get on the tour. I do it with elementary school, high school students all the time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please sign, Mr. Larrango.
My name's DeWitt Dominic and I appreciate the opportunity to submit the following comments and questions regarding DNRC's West Limestone Timber Sale Proposal. comments and questions regarding DNRC's West Limestone Timber Sale Proposal Draft EIS. In late February of this year, I submitted public information requests regarding water resource concerns and questions that were not directly answered or tabled, with the explanation from DNRC and an expectation from Save Our Gallatin Front that these concerns and data gaps could be addressed in this draft EIS. Now that EIS is complete, I offer the following comments and questions that remain unanswered and/or insufficient background data, information, or lack of references limits the quality of review. In the Chapter Three, Soils and Geology Analysis, the Stability Index Map, page 109, the slope stability data needs to be overlaid with other data sets such as the proposed selected cut or clear-cut areas, road transportation networks, and an inventory map of all current wetlands and streams to determine the degree of overlap. This is the power of modern GIS. Evaluate what alternatives and mitigation efforts are necessary to comply with all state federal statutes, and then determine what the cost-benefit of this project may or may not be. On map LW2, the slope stability index values, the values are given in the SIN MAP stability class ratings of lower threshold, you know, class three, quasi-stable, class four. The point here is that between the mid-classes, class three and four, 34.7% of the watershed analysis area is defined as destabilizing factors, not required for instability. In quasi-stable, 20.4% of the watershed analysis area, minor destabilizing factors are required for instability. That equates to over 57% of the watershed analysis area is prone to mid-to-high erosion rates and instability with or without disturbance mechanisms, such as road construction and logging. What percentage of these areas are going to be impacted directly or indirectly by the project? You go to Table S8, we're talking over 64%. So Alternative A, 64% of the area, would be impacted by the lower end. We talked about watershed impacts. They say that there's tons per year is calculated, but we don't know how that budget was derived. There's no references provided.
So, Mr. Dominic, thank you very much. I'm going to cut you off. In the interest of the others here, I would urge you, or anyone who has specific comments that are technically oriented like that in writing, is to submit those in writing. And once again, you can submit those comments in writing. There's a box next door. You can hand them to one of the DNRC employees. But anyone next to you can take those comments and help you put those in the right place.
Josh Dickinson, Director of the Forest Management Trust, resident of Bozeman. Spent most of my career working in the tropics, so this is the new world to me. But I have one comment that does not relate to this specific issue, but to the overall issue of forest and its management. I don't know how many here are familiar with the FSC, the Forest Management Forest Stewardship Council. It's an international organization with a U.S. program that is not active in this state, but in many other states across the country. FSC requirements under its ten principles would, to a great extent, mitigate or eliminate many of the objections that have been voiced here specific to this project. And I would urge people to look it up on the web, Forest Stewardship Council U.S., and see where it would... And the important thing is, the U.S. Forest Service has not been a member because of objections from Sierra Club, Greenpeace, other groups that did not like the way the Forest Service was managing. They have come to an agreement. There is a process underway to provide the opportunity to certify, certify U.S. Forest Service lands as being well-managed. And I think it would be in our great interest as citizens of this state to support that. Sierra Club is behind it, other major environmental groups. So it's, I think, well worth looking into. And as I said at the beginning, this doesn't relate specifically to this project, but to the overall management of forests in this state and across the country and the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Cliff Montane. I am a soil scientist. I represent Save Our Gallatin Front. The draft EIS of 2018, in the portion on geology and soils, I believe, goes into depth about the analysis using information from the Gallatin County Soil Survey. And the analysis takes nine soil mapping units from that soil survey and goes through details of what the effects would be in terms of the activities of road building and timber harvest management, especially the ground-based timber harvest management. And the results in the draft EIS suggest that there would be moderate to low-level impacts. Ron Madlich earlier mentioned Dr. Henry Shovick, a professional soil scientist who is co-author of the Gallatin Natural Forest Soil Survey next door to the study area. And Dr. Shovick also went to the federal government publications and used something called Web Soil Survey, which is a U.S. government online application. And he took not the nine soil mapping units, but he looked at the harvest units. And when you look at the harvest units and the roads and use Web Soil Survey, the results for effects of ground-based timber harvest management and also for suitability of roads that have natural surfaces rather than roads that are covered with veneer show impacts that are severe over between 70 and 100% of either the harvest units or of the total area. So these represent potential red flags, and Dr. Shovick would like to call attention to DNRC of those red flags. He submitted this report in December, and he submitted another letter in August and has not received replies or acknowledgements that this is another way to look at the data using credible science and to see why there is a difference between the two methods of analysis. Thank you.
Perry Miller. I'm a public landowner and public lands hunter. I am not opposed to logging, but I am very opposed to logging this particular unit. I care about Limestone West because it is the last remaining untracked, unrode wilderness corridor that connects to the Gallatin Valley. I've hunted this area for the last eighteen years, and I know it very well. The healthy, secluded Old Girl's Forest feels otherworldly this close to town. The other day, my hunting partner and I counted up how many elk we'd taken in there to feed our families. Thirteen, including the first elk for each of our sons. It's a special place, truly amazing that it can be so near to Bozeman and yet be in a north-slope forest that looks and functions much like it did before humans arrived. So what do we, the taxpayers, get from putting roads into logging this property? It seems like very little. Fire prevention? In my mind, logging to prevent fires is like amputating my legs so I can't break it. And actually, current forestry science ascribes relatively little value to logging as a fire prevention measure. As an example, a record fire season in British Columbia was reported to have burned as hot in areas that had been logged or thinned. Jaws? I have a brother-in-law who owned a logging outfit until recently. I was simply amazed at what two men and a million dollars of machinery could do to harvest a forest. Not many jobs. Money? The Chronicle recently reported the state trust might realize 150,000-something in that area from logging this place. How often will Limestone West be logged? In over 100 years, it hasn't been yet. How much is that per year? And then factor in the cost of all the time DNRC spent hiking to paint trees, to mark roadways, the collective costs of these multiple meetings with concerned citizens, the EIS, subsequent annual spraying for weeds, loss of stream water quality. Really? We're going to destroy this last remnant of valley edge wilderness and not even make money doing it. What does the DNRC stand for? In particular, the C in DNRC. A group of concerned citizens is hoping to buy some sort of conservation bond to prevent the logging of Limestone West, and the proposal they're given is to bid on a 10-year timeframe. How is that not extortion? Every 10 years, the DNRC can come back to the community and put a gun to our head and say, "Paya, or we're going to log." What would a realistic regeneration cycle be? If DNRC can't find a way to do the right thing by this community in such a no-brainer situation, then change your name to DNR and quit wasting the time of anyone who cares about conservation.
Anyone else in the second row? No. So the third row. Are you the first gentleman in the third row? Perfect. Our first individual.
My name is Phil Knight, 32-year resident of the Gallatin Valley. I represent Montanans for Gallatin Wilderness. And I want to thank Save Our Gallatin Front for the pressure that you applied to DNRC. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't be here tonight having this hearing. So it's a great chance to hear from everybody. You know, it's an old conflict that's playing out here between the timber industry and the conservation community. So this is really nothing new, but I hope the conservation community prevails in Limestone West. This area is a crucial part of a large roadless wilderness, the Gallatin Range, which is over 500,000 acres of contiguous de facto wilderness, both on the Gallatin National Forest and in Yellowstone National Park. And this would take a bite out of that roadless wilderness to look at it in the larger context. It's the largest unprotected roadless area in all of Greater Yellowstone. And as such, it's a crucial wildlife corridor, as we've heard from other folks. But I just want to emphasize that we need these wildlife corridors to sustain our wildlife populations over the long term. You know, they're not making any more wildlife habitat last time they checked, but there's more humans on the planet every second. And to put it in another context, something I read recently, not sure if this is entirely accurate, but it's interesting, that of mammal biomass, terrestrial mammal biomass on Earth, only 4% is wildlife. The rest is humans, pets, and livestock. Think about that for a second. 4% of all that mammal biomass. It's kind of gross when you think about it. So we need to preserve what's left of our wildlife habitat and thus our wildlife populations. And I would like to see the no-action alternative implemented. And outside of that, I would like to see the conservation license available and purchased with, again, a stipulation of make that as long as possible. Let's look at a 50-year stipulation at least, and that would be maybe the amount of time it would take to grow some moderate-sized trees back in there. So let's save the Limestone West, and please leave it alone. Thank you.
I just want to make a brief comment. I moved here in 2012.
Could you say it again?
Yeah, I'm Abigail Moneyhan. I moved here in 2012 from Wyoming, and I am just shocked by the lack of progression in this state. When I moved here, I saw that there was an abundance of trees. You know, I would come to visit my son at MSU. And I knew that trees provided an abundance of oxygen, that when there was a fire, that they would absorb the smoke. When there was a windstorm, that it would, like, stop the winds. And I also knew that it would provide a home for, you know, wildlife. But mostly, I knew that it was providing oxygen and a beautiful place for humanity because there's something about going out into trees where you just rejuvenate and you're connected to nature. And I'm so confused about what you guys are doing here because it's like, I hear that it's about money for the school system, but I also hear that it's about fire. And if it's just for money for a school system, there are so many other ways to make money. I look back, my family's from a logging family, I mean, back in the 1800s. And it seems like that's when a lot of these rules were made, in the late 1800s. But things have changed since then. I mean, that was the way that they made money at that point in time. They would get the trees, and they were able to build things out of the trees. But this logging industry has changed as well. At that point in time, when they made the rules for this state, they logged with horses. They didn't come in with logging trucks. And they didn't take out a huge mass amount at a time. They were taking out a lot of dead trees. So I would just really encourage the DNRC to look at things a little bit more progressively. Since these rules have been made, things have changed, like slavery has been abolished, black people can get on a bus, and a logging truck was actually invented, like, some 30 years after these rules were made. So it's time to, like, get with the times. The United States, right now, we are helping other countries not cut down their rainforests. And the fact that we're going to demolish the only green area that we've actually got is ludicrous. For 130,000, I don't care if it's 1.7 million that was going to be created for the logging industry, we can raise that money some other way. It's just time to look, be more progressive. That's all I would ask.
Helen Cardy. I live about half a mile north of this place, and in the 30 years that we've been there, this is, I think, the fifth logging on Mount Ellis. And I'm not totally opposed to logging, and you guys have gotten to here and had it. But this one is really a terrible idea. And of all the terrible things, the worst part of it is the road. The idea of building the road in a place so steep where your own document says that these soils are unstable. The description is, for about, of the 600 acres that would be disturbed in the worst, the heaviest logging thing, about 385 acres are described, or more, are described as shallow, very cobbly, coarse, sandy, long, moist soil on slopes of 35% to 60%. Now, 8% on a road is considered kind of steep. 35% is a great scheme, Dave. I mean, that's it. You know, building the roads, and then it says that for those soils, minor destabilizing factors are required for instability. Now, instability means what happened on part of the Bear Canyon Law... Now, instability means what happened on part of the Bear Canyon logging, where the road fell down. Fell down the hill. And if you look at where these roads are gonna be on that map, they're all right along the stream of Carter. The roads go up one side of one fork of Limestone Creek, down the other side of that fork, then down along, and then up the other side of another fork of Limestone Creek, and back down the other side of that. Now, what does that mean? That means it's gonna block the water that's flowing down the hill. And what does water do? It destabilizes an already unstable place. And then it'll just slop on down the hill. And that will be very bad for the water quality, for the fish, and the other things that live downstream, including the people. You know, to try to simplify what you guys are saying, and then you use the word moderate in the EIN a lot of the time. Moderate means by your own definition, that there's a fifty-fifty chance that something will happen. So, when they talk about moderate instability, that means there's a fifty-fifty chance that those roads will fall down and that, you know, whatever that results in will be bad. So, why are you guys that are for logging? This is not the place. It hasn't been logged for a hundred years, and there are good reasons why it hasn't been logged for a hundred years. It's a bad place to try to get the logs out. It's a dangerous place for people to be and a great place for the wildlife to be. So, I mean, I agree with Nancy and Glenn and the soil scientists and all those people. You know, logging might be okay, but this is not the place.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Burley, would you sign on the table? The witness registry, thank you. Who's next? Come on.
My name is Swobbe Davis. I live in Bozeman. So, this is not a modern technology, but I still have the hard copy with me. I have a few comments on several of the options presented in the draft EIS. Of the two harvest options, A and B, option B clearly is a more reasonable, as it generates significant revenue to the state and significant forest management benefit with dramatically less impact on wildlife, water quality, and erosion. For example, option B eliminates harvesting on the steepest slopes, eliminating the worst of the impacts on erosion and water quality. A major flaw with option B is the approximately 4.8 miles of new permanent roads. This will create a lasting disruption to wildlife. The project area is a major wildlife refuge and corridor for practically every large mammal species that is of value to the state and this community. To amplify this point, I note the Fish Wildlife and Parks Department's comments on the first scoping letter for this project said the road density is in excess of 0.7 to 0.8, seven tenths to eight tenths. Miles of road per square mile of land will cause elk to move away. Yet, the 4.8 miles of permanent roads under option B, when compared to the project area, equates to a density of 1.1 miles of roads per square miles of area. This is fifty percent higher than the density that Fish Wildlife and Parks said would cause elk to move away. The impact is even worse if the 4.8 miles of roads is compared only to the area directly impacted by the proposed harvest, which is approximately half of the project area. And that area, the impacted area, is the very core of the migration corridor. Clearly, the creation of permanent roads will have a permanent and lasting impact on elk in this area, as well as moose and other wildlife. Moreover, making these roads permanent is completely unnecessary. Roads can be closed by simple and inexpensive means, as was done on the roads created for the harvest of the land just to the east of this project a few years ago. In the event of a forest fire in later years, the heavy equipment readily available for fire rating can easily and quickly reopen the roads. While option B is superior to option A in all other regards, it still is unnecessarily flawed due to the creation of permanent roads. The draft EIS also presents an option for timber conservation license, but as currently defined, this option is completely impractical. It offers only a ten-year lease. If DNRC wants to make this a viable option, it should set a term that is comparable to the length of the time it would take for another timber harvest to be viable, which would be at least fifty years, if not longer. Thank you for allowing that comment.
Thank you very much. Please, yes. Mr. Davis asked whether he could submit a statement later, and I believe, just so you know, if you'd like to submit your comments in writing, some version of what you said today, or your notes or something like that, and you want to clean them up, the deadline again is 5:00 PM on October 30th. And you can do that by email, or you can drop them off, or find somewhere you can put them. And there's a website and information sheet next door that reiterates that. So, thank you. With that being preceded, thank you.
My name is Kate Kramer-Vokel. And I don't live in Triple Tree, and I don't live at Eagle Rock. There are citizens all over Bozeman that oppose this logging sale. I did prepare comments, which I will read if I have time, but what I like to say is that if you have not gone up Limestone Creek, you need to do so. This is a primeval, intact ecosystem unlike anything else around us, even Highlight and most of the Gallatin Front that we see. It is an unbelievable experience that is just second to none. And my husband and I went up there a couple days ago, and there were dozens of piles of bear scat. Dozens. We saw a pile of wolf scat. This area is a remarkable wildlife corridor. And I am not just saying that because I believe in not logging, because I think logging is necessary. But if you walk up Limestone Creek and you look at the steep sides of this creek, you just open your mouth and you cannot even believe someone is considering putting roads in there to log. It is unbelievable. I'm gonna read my statement. The Naval Act of 1889 was passed by Congress of the United States reserving particular blocks of public lands to provide common school support to western states, including the state of Montana. Each section of state trust land is assigned to support a specific recipient within the trust. The trust beneficiaries for the state of Montana are as follows. Common schools, K through 12 education, University of Montana, Montana State University, Montana Tech-Butte of the University of Montana, State Reform School, Pine Hills Youth Correction Facility, University of Montana, Western at Dillon, Montana State University, Eastern at Billings, Montana School for the Deaf and Blind, Montana Veterans Home, and lastly, public buildings. DNRC's proposed logging affects sections 3, 4, 9, and 10 of the state trust land between Mount Ellis and Triple Tree Trail on our Gallatin Front. Estimating from looking at the DNRC map of the project, approximately ninety-six percent of the cutting is to be done in an area that is designated to support public buildings. The remaining four percent is specifically targeted to support Butte School of Mines.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Nancy Ostley. And I'm a volunteer leader of Great Old Brownsford Wilderness, as well as Montanans for Gallatin Wilderness, and a member of, also of Gallatin Wildlife Association. I've met with the DNRC starting in March of 2016, so I'm just reiterating some of the points that I've made here. And most of all, I'd like to suggest that the wildlife connectivity corridor that Glenn and Nancy have referred to and others is really critical. We talk about how the wildlife may come back, or how the trees will grow back. I've actually seen some science that suggests we can't assume that with climate change, these forests are gonna regenerate in the way that they have been in the past. I think that a lot of our assumptions that we've used for the last hundred years are not valid for the next hundred years. I think we're going to see some serious changes. We need to be very conservative about the way we get money for the schools. And I agree, there are much better ways. I also finally like to say that the Custer-Gallatin National Forest is in the process of revising their basically thirty-year plan. Alternative D in that plan is for more wilderness than we could hope for. And I'd like to suggest that's a good starting point for us to consider what is the right thing to do with the upcoming forest plan. I don't think we should be sacrificing to timber and mining, or even to recreation, when the wildlife is more critical and we don't have the certainty that they're gonna be able to come back. So, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Michael Scott. Our family's been, lived in the Gallatin Valley for over thirty years. I just wanted to, I understand that the state DNRC's got to manage the state school trust lands for the highest return to the state schools and to all the other infrastructure that was mentioned by the previous speaker. But I'd suggest a couple things. One is that the state can get creative about what return means. And given what we all said in here this evening about the recreational values associated with that land, it wouldn't be unreasonable to define what a recreational easement might be and ask the Gallatin Valley residents to pay the state for the privilege of maintaining that land in a recreational easement. Absent that, if it seems like the only alternative is either some form of timber harvest or some form of conservation easement that alternative C represents, I think the previous gentleman who talked about equating the conservation easement with the rotation cycle of timber is a much more reasonable way of valuing that. Because if the state is willing to take a hundred and thirty or a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in timber revenues for one cycle, one timber revenue cycle, or one timber cycle, why would it not equally be willing to take the equivalent in cash from the residents of the valley for the same period of time? Thank you very much.
And I believe, is that everyone in the third row that wanted to testify? So, we'll start on the fourth row.
I'm Jack Legg. I live in Galton County. I have four points I'd like to make from the DNRC. And I'll do it as quickly as I can. On page 123 of the EIS, you state, or it is stated, that for all species where habitats or conditions are present to support a species, that species is presumed to be present. Really? Is this approach reliable? What has happened to the wildlife population since Bear Canyon Harvest Project? Not only have over six hundred acres of timber been cut, but several miles of roads now exist, allowing hikers and bikers to enter the area. Is it safe to assume that adjacent timber stands hold the wildlife populations that were there prior to the cut and the influx of people? Number two. On page 129 of the DEIS, it discusses the 33,422-acre cumulative effects analysis area, where there are 48.7 miles of open roads and 26.9 miles of restricted roads. How does wildlife population density compare between that area and the Limestone West project area where there are no roads? Three. On page 130, the DEIS states that as a result of the Limestone Project, the American pine martens that are known to occur in the area, based on a study by Steve Gaiman in 2017, may be displaced from local areas intensively logged for several decades due to cover reductions. According to the Gaiman study, the presence of a substantial population of pine martens is one of the best indicators of a healthy wildlife habitat. On number four. On page 126, the DEIS refers to the adjacency of the Bozeman Water Project and the Limestone West projects, and the roads that already exist and those that will be constructed. The DEIS says that with or without the Bozeman Water Project activities occurring, these roads were assumed in the Limestone West analysis to have a persistent adverse effect on wildlife security. Congratulations, folks. Your DEIS makes a very strong case for not cutting a single twig in Limestone West.
Next up in the fourth row?
My name is Doug Hanson. I offer these comments for my boss, who was not able to be here tonight. We work for R.Y. Timber. We own Sawmill in Livingston and Montana Thompson. Our company's been doing business in Mont Haven since 1981. We contract, or excuse me, we employ approximately 220 people in the two Sawmills, and we contract the logging operations to independent companies, who in turn support about another 200 woodworkers. On behalf of R.Y. Timber, our employees and logging contractors, I submit the following comments regarding the Limestone West DEIS. We support alternative A and feel that it is the best option analyzed under the DEIS. There exists a strong demand for logs in the region, and Limestone West is a vital component in the supply chain for Montana's timber industry. Alternative A will improve the forest health and productivity across an area already impacted by forest insects such as the mountain pine beetle and spruce budweiser. Alternative A will maximize both the financial and ecological return to the school trust beneficiaries. The alternative would generate more economic activity and jobs than any of the other alternatives, and most importantly, this alternative will reduce the dangerous fuel loads across the DNRC ownership, thereby reducing the risk of catastrophic fire. On the other hand, the conservation license known as alternative C does nothing for the land. In fact, this alternative puts the taxpayers and the school trust beneficiaries at risk in the event of fire. By deferring the treatment of hazardous fuels for who knows how many years, the likelihood of a fire getting started on state land will continue to intensify. The DEIS was completely silent about which party to a conservation license would be responsible for property damage to adjoining lands and infrastructure caused by a man-made or negligent forest fire starting on these state lands. Neighboring landowners litigating for damages against the state would certainly argue that the deferment of forest management and fuels reduction work caused an otherwise benign fire to reach catastrophic proportions. It is not fair to the beneficiaries or the taxpayers to shoulder that risk alone. The DEIS should have analyzed this fiduciary exposure, yet failed to even consider it. Under Montana law, private landowners are legally responsible for damages to the neighbor's property caused by their own poor judgment. If the conservation license leaseholders are not willing to assume some of the liability for property damage caused by uncontrollable fire during a period of their lease, then the DNRC should refuse to grant the license. It's my opinion that granting the conservation license without first indemnifying the taxpayers and the public schools against these wildfire losses would constitute government malfeasance. For these reasons stated, I urge the DNRC to revisit this issue into a proper analysis of potential liability.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Norquist. I live over in Livingston. I come from a logging family that's been here since the 1970s. You know, I understand all of you guys' point of views. I understand it entirely. If I lived there, I'd probably feel the same way. However, I've lived in this state long enough to see the devastation that we are incurring during this beetle infestation. And I really feel that we need to manage our forests. I don't mean decimate them. I mean, we need to manage it. We need to take the bad timber out, get it out of here, let the regen come back in. These old trees are wonderful. They are beautiful. Don't get me wrong, I love it too. I hunt, I fish. I have two daughters, I have a son. We do all this family stuff. We do all this family stuff together also. But I will remind you that when you have these big trees, little trees do not come up. You don't see regen. And when these trees rot, they're going to fall over, they're going to cause fire, they're going to cause a lot of problem with erosion. So I'm not saying that we need to go in and devastate the forest, but we do need to manage it. And it's not just your guys' little limestone project. I mean, it's the U.S. Forest Service, it's our whole country. This is what's causing our fires that we are incurring right now is, and you talk about wildlife being displaced, fires do that real well. So I would urge for A or B. And I just hope people will think about the future generations because this is all public land and we do need to manage it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. For the record, my name is Jason Todd Hunter. I work for the Montana Logging Association out of the Headwaters region, which is east of the Rockies. I have a few points I'd like to make briefly. We support alternative A. You've heard from some of our members already, these guys, this is their delight life, this is future work for them. So, and those dollars, and we've talked, we've heard a lot about dollars, and it's not just what goes to the press beneficiaries. There's also jobs and other things associated with that. Those guys, if, you know, if they're, they gotta fuel up their trucks, they, sometimes they stay in motel rooms. There's other infrastructure that's used when there's a project like that in an area. So it's not just confined to that one little check. There's families, you know, five hundred families that are in our association that make their living in this industry. So it's not just that small amount that we've talked about that we think that's all the state's getting out of it. There's other, there's other benefits to that. So for that reason, we obviously, we support alternative A. There's a point I'd like to make on alternative C. We've heard about some values and eighteen percent is what I'm hearing from the DNRC is about what is dead up there right now. And so that is a significant amount and it's still got some value where we can still get something out of it. So if you had a portfolio that all of a sudden was going down at eighteen percent and if you sold it right now, you could regain some of that, or if you kept it, you would lose it, what would you do? I mean, that's, I think, an alternative, or something that the DNRC needs to look at for that. The other thing is, we've heard about the value of an alternative C with conservation, where they would bid against the timber sale. There is a lopsided deal on that because there's, the road package on that is over two hundred thousand dollars, value of roads. And that is infrastructure for the DNRC. That's for future logging, that's for getting in and doing other management if they have to put a fire out, for example. So there is that. Those roads actually are valuable. They are valued to the DNRC. And this is school trust land. This is not park land. This is school trust land that is for, what it's been designed for is for management for the school trust. And so, we've heard, we've heard some talk about FSC. In Montana, we do have the Sustainable Forestry Initiative, the SFI. We have multiple mills that are SFI members, which is a little different deal than the FSC, but still, still has some stuff.
Thank you very much.
That's it?
You guys, be sure to handle the comments and please sign the sheet over there as well. Mr. Todd Hunter?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I don't want to miss anybody, that's all.
My name is Brad Foster and I live in the Gallatin Valley and I hike the Limestone West area. Day before yesterday, in the Bozeman Chronicle, there was...
Make someone hit the lights.
Now y'all can't see it. There was a...
Our first written exhibit, and the lights go out.
And an article called "Community Vision" about the last section of the Main Street to the Mountains trails being finished. If we're thinking that way in terms of progressive community vision, one of the things we've got to think about is how that's going to affect the economics for the recreation industry. All of Bozeman will have opportunity through this Main Street to the Mountains trail system to use the Tripletree Trail and the other areas up there. That's, if this is our future now in terms of community vision, then the logging prospects in this particular area are not. We've got to protect our future in terms of how our outdoor recreation and hiking industry will be working. As has been said well earlier by good scientists and folks that know a heck of a lot more than I do, it's the roads that are basically a problem. They become permanent, they impact the wildlife that the folks that will now be using these trails will not be able to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we skip anybody just so? Nope? Okay, great.
Yeah, my, I'm a third generation Montanan. I grew up in Eastern Montana, in Cholona County. Grand parents were homesteaders there, so I think I know a little bit about the Montana way. I'd like to address the fire issue quick. Somebody quoted some statistics, I think one point three million acres burned last summer. I know that a half million acres burned in petroleum and Garthville Counties. Should've been harvested, don't you think? Those grasslands. You've probably heard the term lies, damn lies in statistics. I think a lot of statistics being thrown around regarding the impact of fire and how harvesting timber would improve that fall into the category of lies, damn lies, and statistics.
And is that everyone from the fourth row? And in the fifth row?
My name is Bruce Maxwell and I'm a resident of Bozeman. I'm also a forestry ecologist and a director of the Institute on Ecology at Montana State University. I have a number of reasons for being here. I guess number one is that I'm a hiker and I enjoy the area and have for a long time. I have nothing against logging. I think logging done properly is something appropriate. I live in a wood house. However, looking at the draft environmental impact statement, which I have commented on in writing and submitted, I can say that it's seriously deficient in the soil science arena. And as referenced by Henry Shodrick, there's a number of issues with regard to erosion that are really of major concern. If you could log that area on the overtoe slopes, if you could log that area without roads, I might consider support of it. But as it is, the no action is the only alternative it looks like to me at this point.
Thank you. Feel free to move the microphone.
My name is Jennifer Swerengen and I live in Bozeman. And I really care about Limestone Creek.
No, thank you. I'm going to ask you to move even closer. There you go. Thank you.
Not only do I hike up there, but it flows through the back of our property down on Hitching Post Road. It supports all of the incredible wildlife that we see every day and we really value that experience. And that's why I am so concerned about this project. I read the draft DEIS and I have some really serious concerns. Some of the most important issues that were addressed were dealt with in a, I felt, a really cursory way. The section dealing with the critically important issues of water quality and water quantity totals about three and a half pages each in the entire DEIS. It is stated that experts consulted, data was collected and evaluated, and judgments were made in synthesizing the information, but none of that is shared with us in the DEIS. What we were given was a numerical conclusion without any quantitative analysis to show how that conclusion was arrived at, and I find that troubling. In the short section on water quality impacts, only a single source of sediment is quantified, and that was from stream crossings. It is stated that sediment from road construction, timber harvesting, log skidding, and log hauling were analyzed in a risk assessment, but that risk assessment is missing from the DEIS. In determining impacts to water quantity, it appears that the department is relying on old outdated models to show that water yield will increase throughout not only the spring, but the summer and fall. And the analysis ignores more recent research that incorporates the impact of climate change, which is significantly altering seasonal stream flows, leading to decreases in summer and fall stream flows. In any case, it is really essential to disclose the models that DNRC used and to show us how you arrived at these numerical conclusions. Perhaps, perhaps this lack of transparency is related to the basic facts of this project. I agree with Helen, who it looks like she's already left. You are proposing to build several miles of permanent roads, both up one side and down the other of the creek, all the way almost to the spring that is the source. And then these roads are, go up a long narrow canyon with these incredibly steep sides, and then the roads are gouged out of very unstable rock. It's a bad place. It just shouldn't be.
Thank you very much.
My name's Will Swerengen. I'm the spouse of the previous speaker. I live at fifty-nine Hitching Post Road. And thank you for this opportunity to voice our concerns. One of the points I want to make, and I basically want to emphasize a couple of the points that Jennifer made. One point is that the impacts within this project will not just be felt in the project area. We live on lower Limestone Creek and we're concerned that there are going to be serious impacts there. We're basically concerned that this creek could potentially dry up during the summer and fall. So the draft DEIS assures us that clearcutting is going to increase the water volume, says that the timing of peak flows would generally occur earlier in the spring with potentially higher peak flows and more rapid runoff increase. And also it says that base flows in the summer and fall months would be elevated. Well, that really defies common sense. And I was not able to find any literature to support the idea that the water flow would increase in the summer and fall. Yes, it's going to increase in the spring. Runoff is going to be much more rapid, but there's not going to be recharge of the groundwater through, when the snow melt occurs, it's just going to run off rather than percolating in the soil like it does when there is significant forest canopy. So that is one serious problem. And another serious problem is, as Jennifer said, the DEIS really doesn't show how the preparers arrived at their conclusions, especially in this case, the assertion that base flows increase during the summer and fall. So it really is unacceptable that you provide summary conclusions without the models or the calculations or the analysis used to arrive at those. And I think it's not only unacceptable, it's probably legally insufficient. Now, one reason I'm not reassured is that I hiked last summer with my wife in the Bear Canyon Timber Sale Area. It was late summer, it was a hot day. We were hiking along a stream that was much like Limestone Creek, except that it was completely dry. There were cows walking up the dry creek bed and bawling, looking for the water that used to be there.
Thank you. And if you would sign that. Thank you. Next. Are we in the fifth row? Is that correct? Let's see, anyone else in the fifth row? Anybody else in the sixth row? I can't quite see very well, so if I could have a show of hands of people that are still remaining who would like to testify? And then I'll just go from left to right, if that works. One of you two gentlemen, I believe, would be next, and then across. Sure, come on up. We'll make sure that everybody has an opportunity. It's just difficult to, kind of a long way back. Thank you.
Well, I wasn't expecting you to get to me so soon.
My name is Roger Breeding. I live in Bozeman. So here we have a wonderful, natural bit of unspoiled wildlife habitat right close to town, and DNRC has provided no reasonable way in which citizens can protect it. The discussion of how DNRC arrived at the proposed ten-year duration for timber conservation license is completely incomprehensible. While concerned citizens could certainly raise more than the one hundred and thirty thousand or the one hundred and ninety thousand that clearcutting the forest would generate for the trust in order to protect this land, you can't seriously expect these citizens to raise this amount every ten years. The funds generated by logging the land will be generated only every ninety to one hundred years. Citizens should be allowed to protect the land for a similar period, given that the funds realized for school buildings would be the same or exceeded. On another topic, I found the description of the roads to be constructed on the steep slopes generally Latin. The west side of Limestone Creek, where thin soils will rely, the Precambrian ice and similar metamorphic rocks on a very steep slope is a particular concern. It would appear that soil will have to be gathered from many dozens of feet uphill to road to get enough soil to build a road surface. Resolving scar on the hillside seems likely to exceed one hundred and fifty feet vertically and is likely to exceed even two hundred feet vertically. Yet there is no description of the road building process or the distances to be disturbed uphill and downhill of the road. The road scar generated will probably last for generations. A road built by DNRC on a similar slope on the area logged in 2011 to 2013 on the east side of North Mountain Ellis failed within a year after the logging ceased. And since I've got another minute, I was up there Friday and I discovered a whole bunch of moose scat in five or six different piles. So the area is currently being used by moose. And if you go up to the area that they logged about thirty years ago, you'll notice that there are very few trees coming back, and the area will certainly not be able to be logged in another fifty years. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't quite see back there, so you'll have to be self-regulating in your order.
I'm Noreen Breeding. Commercial logging should never have been proposed for this pristine area. Being this close to Bozeman, it is uniquely valuable for its wildlife habitat and security. It is decidedly unsuited to logging due to its steep slopes, narrow valleys, unstable soils, abundant perennial streams and springs, limited access, and rich community of wildlife. Other options should have been offered for conserving the... of wildlife. Other options should have been offered for conserving the natural attributes of this land by the quote harmonious and coordinated management of the various resources with consideration being given to their relative values, quote unquote. That's from the Montana Code. And citizens are willing to help the school trust to protect quote natural ecosystem integrity in perpetuity, quote. That's another quote from the Montana Code. However, the simple option to do so that was offered, the timber conservation license, is crippled by a short 10-year term. No entity would bid against a logging company for it. The logging company would bid once every 100 years, whereas a license seeker would have to bid every 10 years. The short term runs counter to the legislative intent to allow citizens' participation. It also violates basic principles of conservation easements. The period should be 100 years, the time required for this forest to regrow. Additionally, the license term should be changed to recognize the differences between a commercial business and a group of citizens. Permanent roads are the greatest threat to wildlife here because they will encourage excessive human presence, resulting in wildlife displacement as the DEIS recognizes. All new roads associated with this project must be completely reclaimed and made impassable. The DEIS lacks any details about road construction and placement that reassure leaders that the latest and safest techniques will be adhered to. An analysis focused on the actual forested area where roads will be built and trees cut is lacking. That area is approximately 1.81 square miles, or 1158 acres in extent. The 9.2 miles of road proposed to be built there yield a road density of 5.1 miles per square mile, four times the threshold for elk disturbance identified by Montana FWP. Even if only 5.3 miles of roads are permanent, that density is still 230% of the threshold. Because of the three different scales of analysis used and the lack of focus on the area of disturbance, many analysis results are untrustworthy.
Thank you, Ms. Breeding.
My name is Anna Allen, and I'm a resident of Bozeman, and I'm opposed to this particular timber harvest. First, as a member of the Save Our Gout and Front organization, we are deeply disappointed in the proposed term of the conservation license outlined in Alternative C. Most of Limestone West is north-facing slopes. Critically, north-facing slopes are known to provide slower growth rates for lodgepole pines. The lodgepole pines are the primary tree species in this area. Forestry management experts whom we have consulted estimate that it would take 75 to 100 years for this area to regrow, to the point where it would be loggable in the future. Montana law allows for a 99-year term for conservation license, consistent with the fact that it takes 100 years for a forest to regrow. And yet through the questionable net present value analysis, you have determined that a 10-year license term is appropriate. We do not believe that the term of the license should be that complicated. Per the statute, in order to have the right to put the conservation license in place, a group would have to successfully outbid all other competitive bids for the logging project. That is simple. It will take 75 to 100 years for the forest to regrow and be eligible for another logging event. That is simple. The term of the license should be the same timeframe that it would take to regrow the forest, or the time that it would take for another logging event to occur, 75 to 99 years. It is that simple. We urge the DNRC to establish a conservation license term of 75 to 99 years that is consistent with the period it will take in reality to regrow Limestone West project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, keep, come on up, please. I can't quite see. Can I have a show of hands for, is there, I'll wait till you're done in the last picture. I think you're the last person to raise their hand.
Oh, no pressure, no, really.
No, no, you're good.
Take as much time as you want.
Okay, now more pressure. Okay, first up, my name is Jenica Dunsh. I'm a longtime resident of Bozeman, Montana. My family actually has owned land up near the proposed site for, well, since about 1974, and we've kept it in our family since then. Thank you all for giving us a chance to show all of our sites now before I waste any more time there. I know there's far too many things, and just looking through the book, I, too many to fit into three minutes. So I've broken it down into four essential little parts here. One, animals. I think we've basically all covered that it's a very crucial gateway for the animals, and you can do all the testimony and get all the facts that you've already heard today. Two, tourism, I'm unsure if that's been covered as well. People will come, they come here to see beauty, not bear and landscapes. That's a big key there, and what's good, that goes back to animals. Don't have the beauty of the animals coming, don't have the tourists there to go there. Third one, traffic. Okay, so we've all discussed about the traffic with the lobby, the logging trucks and all of that, but also in with that is the potential for more dogs, people. They're hiking, they're biking, they're leaving their garbage behind, they're leaving their tracking objects. Weed, so many other things that can and do go wrong when you introduce humans where they have not been and should not be. And it says right in your, I think on page 157, one of the many ones, that the route selected by users and intensity of recreation into the future is uncertain. So once again, you take people where they shouldn't be, and that leads me to what can possibly go wrong there. Which leads me to my fourth one, animals. Animals, this time being humans. If we are going to do these things that have an adverse effect on our watershed, we, as all animals do, need water. So I had so much more I would like to make points there, but I think that kind of did a very, very light coating on everything that is at stake for just a few, a few dollars. Thank you.
And what, would you sign, sign this at least? And I would urge you that if you have written comments, please submit them, and if you need to rewrite them and submit them, that's fine as well.
My name is Jillian Cleary, and I am a resident of Bozeman, a graduate of Bozeman High, and I appreciate the opportunity to receive public comment on this. A couple things. We have done a really great job of touching on the scientific, environmental, detailed reasons why this particular project is not wise. We've heard appeals to pathos from the logging industry about the long-term effect on jobs for the future generations, and I hope to be part of the future generations of Montana and even raise future generations here myself. And I think our calculus needs to change a little bit as we think about climate change and the observable unpredictable effects going forward of how we think about the value of wilderness and how we think about the value of natural resources. I think they're going to become increasingly more valuable as we are able, as I said, to reproduce exact full ecosystems. It'll take longer and longer cycles to get back to those thriving ecosystems that actually make life possible for small-town people and for people in big cities with air quality and water quality and all these different things. So, and secondly, I think that it is a little bit disheartening and a little bit discouraging to feel as if each community going forward needs to be defending its natural resources from the professionals and public institutions that are supposed to protect that and conserve that. And so I hope that while we should recognize this is a complicated issue and a complicated project with valid needs on both sides of the aisle, I hope we can recognize that the conservation of something that will be increasingly valuable is something that I hope the public and professional institutions can work together on and not feel as much at odds on. So thank you for receiving our comments, and I am, I would pursue option A of no action. Option C feels a little bit insulting, feels like we have to be defending ourselves to try and keep the area around our community free from hazardous environmentally and community hazardous developments. So option A would be ideal, or as we mentioned, option C with completely eternal benefits to keep things over there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you're excited, please, thank you. Are there any other, so this is, this is your opportunity to comment at the hearing, so if you would like to, once we, once I've determined that there's no one else in this room that wishes to, I will close the hearing, but I want to make sure that I've given everybody an opportunity to comment. Is there anyone left that would like to comment and has not done so? Perfect. I do not see, is there?
I'm lost.
Oh, perfect, wonderful. Come on up. I'm sorry.
My name's Karen Williams. I'm a resident for here 25 years. I just wanted to comment that when I was teaching geomorphology at MSU two years ago, I had a group of senior students who did their research project on the stability of the slopes in Limestone Creek, and engineering students and master's students in earth sciences. And they did a set of analyses which were reported to the DNRC, and I don't know how they were responded to or how they were used in this analysis, but their analyses showed that those slopes would be unstable in most settings. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Those geologic units are cambrian, they're turned on end, they're essentially vertical, and some of those units are shales. Shales do not stand on end. Thank you.
Okay, going once, going twice. Any other people that would like to comment? Seeing that everyone here has had an opportunity to comment, I'm going to close the public hearing on the draft, Limestone West draft environmental impact statement. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say nice job. Sorry, but, no. Decision maker in what section? Good answer.
I heard that the already general executive of this project, Aaronson, had some coworkers today who shot. I think he's going to put a point share for all the public comments that they come up with, so that you guys can see them and give them to your folks.
That John's going to be a point share, keep hold of where all the public comments can share with the landlord as they.
How much money has been invested in DNRC and this project so far? She started out the question of what are the benefits of greater area of this project?
Joe, it's good to see you here tonight.
Questions about processing whether or not you're going to, because she, if there's a lot of people coming to the landlord, he'll be this emotional outpouring, and that was kind of what got them, of course, we can, she would like to be deliberate around this thing, too.
So about 41.
Yeah, for sure. So those will trap when, those means also they will, this trap.
So what'll happen is, so I'm going to bring those two, to the hearing center, Lady Pika. She'll put them on, Jamie Price, she will put them all electronically, put her chair on, and they'll, they'll remember where they were.
Yeah.